Good evening, fellow members of the executive, officers, fellow councillors, and ladies and gentlemen in the gallery. Good evening and welcome to this evening's meeting of our Executive Council. And I'll start with item one on the agenda, which is the minutes. And that's the confirmation of the minutes of the last meeting that was held on the 5th of September 2017 as a correct record. Can I just confirm, colleagues, that you are agreed on that item? Fine, I'll sign those at the end of the meeting, thank you. And moving to apologies for absence.
I'm received, Leader.
Thank you. And moving to declarations of interest.
Councillor Bolton has declared a non-procureable interest in item 10 regarding the leisure public toilets as a Godleming town councillor.
Councillor Edwards?
Thank you, I'd like to declare an interest in item 10 as well because I'm on Hazelmead Town Council. Thank you.
Likewise, Leader, I'm also on Hazelmead Town Council.
For the record, are there any other town councillors from Godleming or Hazelmead who are here who wish to declare an interest? No? Okay. Any other interests to be declared? Right, okay, that's lovely, thank you. Moving on, on item four, questions from members of the public. It is my understanding that we have no questions. Correct? Thank you. So if we move to the next item, which is the Budget Management Report, and that's pages seven to 12. Councillor Hall, would you like to introduce that item?
Yeah, thank you, Leader. There are five items, and I'd like to say just a couple of words on each of them. For item number one, most members attended the finance seminars. The finance team outlined the sources of revenue, the pressures, the risks, and our strategy to balance the budget going forward. The budget is forecast to be on budget, but there are always risks which could change this. Conditions on this remain very challenging. For the second item, Leader, this is a pilot which we want to participate in. It's detailed in Paris 11 to 13. There is a possibility of a one-off financial gain, but I will report further when I have more information. Item three, Leader, this project is the data project, and it's wide-ranging scope across all local authorities and is a substantial piece of work. The outcome affects every area of council activity, and we are therefore allocating £50,000 to ensure we are in compliance within the needed timeframe. This will be done in joint procurement with other councils. Number four is £15,000 capital for Godleming Museum, and number five is just to carry forward. Thank you, Leader.
Councillor Hall, thank you. Colleagues, any comments on these items? Councillor Martin?
Thank you. If I could just comment on the money going towards the data protection, I think it's absolutely vital that this is done. I mean, data protection is a hugely important area that is becoming ever more critical for any organisation, public or private. And, I mean, indeed, information has become the new currency of choice, and as such has become perhaps more valuable than gold. And I think it really is very important that we abide by any regulations surrounding data laws in the same way that we might do with, and treat it in the same way that we might do with our financial risks. So I'm very much in favour of this.
Thank you, yes, I think this is an excellent example of proposed joint working across councils. This is a huge piece of work that all bodies, including local authorities, are required to undertake. The significance of it cannot be underestimated, and I think that it is going to be a very, very challenging piece of work. It's got to be completed by, I think it's May of next year, so very tight timings and timescale on that, which I think we're all confident can be met. But as I say, the significance of this work and the new laws around the governance regulations cannot and should not be underestimated. So I'm pleased to see that we are working across councils on that, really making sure that we're procuring really good and really robust resource. And clearly, if we need to invest any further in that to ensure that we deliver within the times and with the right level of work that is required, then, you know, I would urge the officers to make sure that they flag that to the leadership very, very quickly so that we can move, if needed, to address that further. But I'm pleased to see this coming before us tonight.
I've got councillor Stori, and then councillor Edwards.
Thank you, Leader. Actually, I stuck my hand up and then realised I'd misread my note. But just to reinforce, yes, the date is very tight, it's the 25th of April, sorry, the 25th of May, that's me reading my notes again, when this comes into force. And what we need to be aware of is that the definition of personal data has been very widely extended from what we're used to under the Data Protection Act, and the penalties for breaching the Act have gone through the roof, up to 4% of annual turnover, or €20 million, depending on which is the greater. So it is a very serious subject that we need to get right.
Thank you, councillor Stori. I have councillor Edwards and then councillor Hall.
Thank you, Leader. Just looking at the item number sixteen, paragraph number 16 on this item, it says we're currently exploring options to jointly procure external resource, which I welcome because I think joint working is the way forward within the council and for all councils. As a matter of interest, how long will it take to get together with these other councils and decide on a way forward? Is it imminent, or is it months away, or what?
So my understanding, councillor Edwards, is that they've already held initial meetings, and they're speaking with our 151 officer, Mr Clark, on Friday. They, as I say, they've had the initial meetings and sort of the scoping of the actual work that is required for this. So they're actually, that is well underway. You know, we can't afford to hang around a bit bluntly, okay? So please rest assured that, you know, that is in progress. And obviously, the Audit Committee, in addition to Executive and members overall, will be kept updated, because I know the Audit Committee have taken a very keen interest in making sure that this is happening and this is moving forward.
Councillor Hall?
Yeah, Leader, sorry, I just wanted to come back on something. Yeah, this is a hugely serious piece of work that has to be done, and we're constantly going to be keeping an eye on the resources which are required. And if in the future more resources are required, or more time, or officers' time, then they will be brought to Executive and committed. We don't have the choice not to be compliant, we absolutely must make sure that we make the deadline, and we'll make sure that we have the resources in place to be able to do that.
Thank you. So hopefully that reassures you, councillor Edwards, that, you know, we recognise the significance of this work, and as I said, the time scales. Councillor, Mrs King?
Thank you, Leader. Like, just a comment, please, on the stop remodelling, paragraph 25, just to change the subject slightly. I'm really disappointed that we haven't moved on faster than we already have on this project. We have three community rooms now with planning permission to be converted into habitable accommodation, to give us more accommodation for our tenants, which is to be welcomed. But there are more to, there's a lot more to do, but unfortunately, the leading times have been far, far in excess of what was anticipated, and hence the carry-forward of the funds. Thank you.
Thank you. One other area I'd like to comment on here is item two, which is the Waverley's proposed participation in the bid for the Business Rate Pilot Scheme. And I would like to acknowledge the work and the exceptional work, again, in quite a very short period of time, given the government coming through and coming forward and inviting us to bid in this process, to be a part of this pilot. And I'd like to thank the finance team here at Waverley, and especially Mr Clark, who is absent today, he's actually on well-earned leave. But there's been an awful lot of work with all the Surrey Treasurer's Group, right the way across Surrey and the county on this, to really make sure that we've got a very robust bid going in to government to participate in this pilot. There are significant benefits if we are successful. I think we all know that our finances are challenged, we're in very challenging times financially as a local authority, so any way that we can have an opportunity to participate in these sorts of pilots that actually are beneficial to us financially, which this obviously will be, are obviously, you know, areas that we really want to be leading on along with our other Surrey district and borough colleagues, and of course, the county as well. So a huge endorsement and my thanks to all the team who've been involved in that, because as I say, they've been pulling this together in a very short, short space of time. Just one other comment in terms of the governance regulations, and then we'll sort of close that off, and that is that, given the significance of that, what we will also be doing, and I'm proposing, is that we will have a member briefing on that subject, because there is so much in terms of new regulation coming through, on terms of how we'll use data and so forth, so there will actually be the opportunity for all members to be briefed on that as we progress with that, so that everybody is aware and we are fully compliant in all ways with that. So if I can move, therefore, colleagues, to the four, five, sorry, recommendations before us? Are those agreed? Thank you. Can I move to item six, which is the Indoor Leisure Facility Strategy? Councillor Else?
Thank you, Leader. So the Indoor Leisure Facility Strategy sets out Waverley's vision for future leisure facilities in the borough over the next 10 years. And the delivery of these objectives will help develop a more modern, efficient, and sustainable range of community-based sport and leisure facilities, which is what Waverley requires. The strategy will also inform the council's approach to place shaping, which is a word that we will see more and more of in the future, I think, in these matters, and it's a very important element of our community work. Physical activity undoubtedly has a positive impact on the health and wellbeing of individuals, both nationally and locally, there's clear recognition of the importance of encouraging communities to lead an active lifestyle. Health and wellbeing remains a key strategic priority for this council to ensure prosperous and active communities. The Indoor Leisure Facility Strategy is an important council policy that will help protect and advance the current facilities and explore future investment. Our vision is to provide accessible, high-quality indoor leisure facilities to encourage our residents to lead an active lifestyle, increase participation, and help improve general wellbeing. The significant increase in housing in our borough will have an impact on the facilities available, and we need to ensure the increasing demand is met. It will provide us, the increase in housing will provide us with an opportunity to maximise developer contributions, and this will play a key role in helping us to deliver this strategy. I believe there is value in exploring the enhancement of Waverley's current leisure centres that will provide a much better leisure offering for residents, but also an invest-to-save opportunity for the council. So the executive leader is invited to support this strategy and ask that officers explore future investment opportunities. Thank you, Leader.
Mrs Else, councillor Mrs Else, sorry, thank you, that's very informative. Colleagues, any questions or comments? Councillor Dinas?
Thank you, Leader. I was pleased to see Cranley has been identified as a leisure centre that needs refurbishment. Although I do accept Cranley School does provide facilities, it is slightly out of the town, and if you live in one of the estates, it's not quite as accessible, so I do think that Cranley Leisure Centre is a priority, so I'm...
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Anyone else, any comments? In that case, we have two recommendations before us, under item six. Are those agreed? Thank you. Item seven is the safeguarding policy for children and adults at risk, and that's councillor Dinas. Would you like to introduce that?
Thank you, Leader. Safeguarding is everybody's responsibility, and this policy outlines the authority's response. The policy draws together safeguarding legislation for children and adults into one clear document. It outlines the signs of abuse, the key principles and themes, and a clear process that is sensitive to the individual circumstances. It indicates a clear policy on how referrals are made, and will be supported by awareness training to all staff. Now, this document has been subjected to member input. My thanks to councillor Jenny Else and councillor John Gray for their time and commitment in going through this document. It's also undergone review by officers and scrutiny by the Community Wellbeing Overview and Scrutiny Committee. Their views have been welcomed and adopted into the policy. Finally, I'd like to thank Mr Andrew Smith, the head of Strategic Housing and Delivery, who has worked tirelessly to integrate complex legislation into a clear, concise policy that will help those who are vulnerable and at risk. There are two recommendations tonight, Leader, which are indicated on page four of the agenda, which our requests are supported. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Dinas. Councillor, Mrs King, and then councillor Else?
Thank you, Leader. I'm really pleased to see this new policy, I think the incorporating of children in with adults, and making it now absolutely clear, there is, there can be no doubt about who it's referring to. I think it's an excellent piece of work. Thank you.
Councillor Else?
Thank you, Leader. I echo that absolutely. I think this is a really good document, it's very clear, very concise, easy to read, and it's easy to refer to, which is very important. Otherwise, if you start in the middle and try and work your way out, you're lost. So this is very clear, and nobody should have any excuse if any safeguarding issues are evident where to go. Thank you very much, and really good piece of work.
Yes, I think we'd all like to echo our thanks to all the officers involved, following up from the comments made by councillor Dinas. It is an excellent piece of work, it's not an easy subject, and it's not an easy sort of document to pull together in a way that actually can be easily accessed and very clearly referenced, which is what this does. So this has managed to achieve all that. So we've got two recommendations before us on that item. Are those agreed? Thank you. Item eight, and that's Performance Management Report for Quarter One 2017/18. And the report itself sets out the performance for the first quarter across the main council service areas, and paragraph two of the covering report sets out for us a very clear executive summary. Now, you will see that of the 40 performance indicators that were measured, some, 29 are on target, as in, they're green. We've got six that are up to 5% off target, so showing amber, and five which are over 5% off target. So those obviously are the ones that really need focus on moving forward. You'll be pleased to hear that the government have actually introduced three new performance indicators for the planning service. And I'm very pleased to report that the performance on processing planning applications was well within the target for this first quarter. Comments from the committees are actually included at the end of the covering report, starting at paragraph 28 onwards. I'd like to thank the Community Wellbeing Overview and Scrutiny Committee for the work they did on this area, and the proposals to introduce a new local performance indicator in the service areas of Careline, Waverley Training Services, and our leisure team, and leisure department, which again is set out in paragraph nine of that report. I'd also like to recommend that these be adopted, and as I said earlier, thank the Overview and Scrutiny Committee for their comments and their observations, which have been really, really helpful in informing this report, but also ways that we can really start to move things forward. So we have two recommendations. Are those agreed? Thank you. Item nine, which is the reports and recommendations from Overview and Scrutiny. Thank you to councillor Williamson for coming along and attending this evening. Councillor Williamson, as many of you will know, is the chairman of the informal coordinating board, I think I've got your title correct. And I've asked him if he would come along this evening to actually sort of present to the executive sort of the summary report, and sort of some of the findings from the committees. So councillor Williamson, the floor is yours.
Thanks very much for that lead-in, Leader. Let me start, first of all, by perhaps just making some observations. We're six months into the new system now, and it's perhaps a good time to make those general observations. First of all, despite the, some teething problems with the sound system, certainly, in my view, and I think in most of the people who are participating in ONS, the use of the conference room for that type of venue is a great success. It encourages debate and produces, I think, a far better result than in a more formal chamber environment. Having smaller groups also assists that, because hopefully we now have people with both a knowledge and an interest in the subject content, which is smaller, and allows people to probe into it in perhaps greater depth than they would otherwise have done. The, one area I'm a little concerned in, concerned about, is public participation. There has never been a lot of public participation in overview and scrutiny, and it's a shame. We have initiated a, I suppose you'd call it a publicity strategy, to encourage the public to get involved and to put forward suggestions of areas that they, as the residents want to have scrutinised. So that's ongoing, it's just started. The formation of the informal working groups, I also think adds a lot of value. It allows, you know, three or four people to get together and to really delve into a subject with the officers. We're on a bit of a learning curve, I've got to say, and forming those working groups has run up against the constitution, but we have made some suggestions, those have gone through the committee, I think we'll be going to council, to make those working groups more effective, and to use properly the resources that the council has. What else is there to say on a general sense? I would encourage portfolio holders, if they've not been invited, to attend an overview and scrutiny and be part of a particular discussion, if it's on their subject, you know, definitely look at the webcast, because there are some very interesting debates, lots of subjects or elements of subjects are discussed, which I think would be of value, and they're not normally discussed in this type of environment. So I think there's certainly value to be gained there. You'll be pleased to know, I don't really intend to go in through detail of the report, but there are the major conclusions, well, not major conclusions, but there are four areas which we've particularly drawn attention to the executive, and in fact, would like the agreement of the executive to undertake them. I'm on page 147, from the Housing and Overview Scrutiny Committee, there are a number of points that, and I guess you've all read them, and I don't intend to read them. On page, again, on 147, there's the Environmental Overview and Scrutiny, again, which made some points, which would like the executive's action, and the same applies to the community wellbeing. So these are just extracts of points which the executive needs, or we would like them to take action on. They've been well thought through and as a result of a thorough debate. I think that's probably enough, Leader, thank you.
Thank you, councillor Williamson. Now, I know that I've already spoken to, just to sort of touch on some of the points that you've raised, I've spoken to Mrs McQuillan already, and we're going to invite Karen Simmons in to sort of present to members prior to a forthcoming council meeting, because we felt that was a good way to sort of make sure that we captured as many members as possible to sort of brief on that. I, absolutely, moving to fly tipping. I so agree with the points made, and I think councillor Dinas, I mean, it's a subject very dear to the hearts of a number of us on the executive. We have real concerns about fly tipping, and I know that Mr Homewood is liaising with our contractors, so that we're very clear on how we're reporting fly tipping, that we've got really robust data, so that we can be very clear when we talk to, back to our colleagues at Surrey, but overall, actually really measuring what is happening, because I think at the moment, we're all convinced and we can see that it's happening, but we actually need far more robust data, I think, to really back up our case on that. So, did you want to come back briefly?
Well, just on fly tipping, because I can add to the personal experiences. I mean, I live on a little bridle path. In four years, there has been one fly tipping on that. In the last three months, there have been four. I mean, it's just totally out of control. I mean, it's just totally out of control. Somebody needs to get a grip of it.
And I know I frequently drive up from the Shepherd and Flock as I drive up on the first little bit of the A31 towards the Runfold Slip Road. There's an area there that seems to be frequented by fly tippers, unfortunately. So yeah, and I think, you know, we're all seeing it across the borough. So it's making sure that we start to build some very robust, very robust case on this so that we can really start to address it. We have got some ways that we can address it in terms of the jet. We've got our mobile CCTV that we bought in, haven't we councillor Dinas? So there is a lot more and I think our residents want to see us becoming far more robust in the way that we address that. I've got my list, my to-do list from you in terms of people to write to. So thank you. Yes, I will make sure that is also actioned. But I think generally, yes, the feedback has been that there've been a few, you know, issues bedding in, but why wouldn't there be? You know, we're undergoing quite a sea change in terms of the overview and scrutiny. We've gone from two to four committees. But the feedback I'm getting in general is that the smaller, more focused work groups really do seem to be bedding in and working well. I know the democratic services team and the officers in general, because I know that we are drawing on an awful lot more of our officers with these new scrutiny committees and work groups and so forth. So thank you to everyone involved because it has been a big learning curve for everyone. But I think, you know, it's, we're starting to see some very good ideas and some good pieces of work coming through and I look forward to that continuing. And also, you know, you or a colleague from the coordinating board continuing to sort of come and actually speak to us at our meetings so that we can really understand. And you can help us to sort of draw out and really get your grips with, you know, where your focus is. So that's really helpful. Thank you very much. Colleagues, any other comments? Okay, we'll start with councillor Else and councillor Bolton.
Thank you, leader. I just wanted to say that I'm really pleased and very interested to hear that the advice that we received to remove ONS from this chamber and put it into a smaller room has resulted in more fruitful debates and better debates. So that's just, I just wanted to say that. As part of the review committee, it is obviously a subject dear to my heart and I'm just very pleased to hear that. So thank you very much.
councillor Bolton.
Thank you, leader. I refer to pages 145 to 146 about health inequalities. As a councillor for a ward with some health inequalities, I very much welcome the opportunity to hear more about public health issues. Thank you.
councillor Dinas.
Thank you, leader. I've actually worked with Karen Simmons from Public Health and I've heard the presentation and it's quite outstanding how they can just show the inequalities that there are within Waverley. I won't spoil their thunder, but actually it's very interesting what they say and how the inequalities just across Waverley are so evident. Took us very quickly going on to fly tipping. I'm delighted about that. And at the end of the day, good data means better targeted enforcement. You know, if we don't get that sort of level of data, you know, what day of the week is it the day that the amenity sites are open? All those type of issues, we won't be able to really target our resources. So absolutely welcome there. And just one final point, point three of on page 147, which is about you writing a letter to various people. There's a long list there. You know, I've had calls from Kara Shaw, which is an establishment in, obviously in my area, which looks after the seafarers. And they've had some funding cut and they just don't know which way to turn next in some of these issues. So I think although specifically we're going to write about some of the issues we have and the impacts, there's a huge impact on our community. So I'm really pleased that that recommendation's been put for you to do that letter. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Dinas. Any other comments at all? councillor Mars.
Yeah, I'm sure councillor Hall will join me in thanking the Value For Money Customer Services Overview and Scrutiny Committee at essentially taking on, dealing with the budget deficit, which affects us all. And I think any opportunity that we can eke out from any area of the council that we may be able to increase revenue instead of having to salami slice and look at efficiencies has to be seen as a good thing. And I really look forward to seeing the fruits of your labours because I think that's, that's really key. And I think it's fantastic that more members are getting involved in looking at how we can better deal with the, with the budget problems that we have.
Colleagues, any other comments? Or can we move to the recommendation? No? Thank you. And then if we move to item 10, which is the grant of the lease of public conveniences to the town councils. councillor Edwards? Oh, sorry. Let me move back to the report. Sorry, colleagues, can I refer you back to the main body of the report? So if we take them one by one, the recommendations on page 145, there is one recommendation on that, under the Value For Money.
Agreed.
And under the community wellbeing on page 146, there is one recommendation.
Agreed.
On the bottom of page 146, under Environment, Overview and Scrutiny, and then the top of page 147, we've got two recommendations. Right, and then my to-do list, which is under the Housing Overview and Scrutiny. So that's page 147, leading on to page 148. We've got three recommendations again.
Agreed.
Right, okay, we've got those all noted. Good. Apologies for galloping ahead on that one. So we come to the, the final item of the agenda. councillor Edwards, the granting of leases of the public conveniences to the town councils. Would you like to lead on that?
Thank you, leader. The members will recall that we reluctantly agreed to the closure of the public conveniences in Hazelmead and Godoming. This was part of an extremely challenging and difficult budget setting process and in the face of significant cuts in our funding from central government. Whilst alternative arrangements were put in place with local businesses, I'm pleased to say that we have been able to work with both Hazelmead and Godoming Town Councils to negotiate agreements which will enable them to operate the public conveniences in the future. We are therefore pleased to be recommending the grant of 20-year leases in respect of the public conveniences to the town councils tonight. There do remain one or two minor details in the terms and conditions to resolve and we are therefore recommending that these decisions are delegated to the Strategic Director of Finance and Resources in consultation with the portfolio holders for finance and customer and corporate services. There is a slight amendment we need to make to the recommendation in the report to facilitate this by removing the word 'other' from it. I would ask members to support the proposal to grant the 20-year leases. Thank you.
councillor Edwards, thank you. Colleagues, any comments on this item? Right, in that case, for clarification, shall I read out the proposed amendment? So I'll read it in full. Councillor Edwards said it's that we delete the word 'other' from the recommendation. So it is recommended that Waverley enters into 20-year leases with Godoming and Hazelmead Town Councils on the heads of terms set out in the exempt annexes to the report with the final agreement of terms and conditions to be delegated to the Strategic Director of Finance and Resources in consultation with the portfolio holders for finance and customer and corporate services. Colleagues, is that agreed?
Agreed.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, there are no items in exempt and we have no other items to cover in this meeting. So my thanks to you all for your time and we'll close the meeting. I wish you a safe journey home. Thank you.